Good evening. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article V, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, January 16, 2018, at 5:35 PM and at 6:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with the executive sessions. Executive Session A: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, regarding a matter which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session B: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property with Union Pacific.
Motion to move to executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will continue with our regular meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, indivisible, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we love you and we thank you for all you've done in our lives. Lord, the things we see and the things we don't recognize because we trust you. And Lord, we thank you for all the good things of 2017 and, Lord, for the bad things we ask you to heal us, help us to move forward. Lord, in this new year, we ask you to lead and guide each of us, help us to have a closer relationship with you, realizing that all true wisdom comes from you. And tonight, as temperatures drop, we ask you to keep our citizens safe, keep them warm, lead and guide them. And, Lord, those north of us that are experiencing far lower temperatures, we ask you to bless them as well. Lead and guide this meeting tonight, lead and guide our mayor, commissioners, and every presenter to do what's best for the City of Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Next, we have action on items discussed in executive session. Action Executive A: There was no action required. Action Executive B: Action on item discussed as discussed in executive session.
Motion to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the mayor's activity update.
I don't have an activity update other than to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I apologize that we didn't have a quorum the last time, but, and I thank everybody for being here with this kind of weather that we're going through, but I would ask the permission of the Commission is that as soon as we get through with the proclamations and presentations, if I could move up public comment in order to that the people who are going to make public comment, we don't jeopardize their ability to get home safely. And I do want to mention to you some of the folks that are here about the reference to the monument. That item is on the agenda, and you cannot have a public comment on items that are on the agenda. However, as you notice, this is just a discussion, but there are a couple of people here who are on public comment on other subjects other than what's on the agenda. So with your permission, guys, I would like to take them out of order after the proclamations and presentation, if that's okay.
Objection.
Okay.
I have a...
Commissioners' activity report?
Yeah. I just wanted to give a big shout-out to the chief and the Brownsville Police Department. Last week, our downtown pedicab was stolen, and within a week, they recovered it and got it back. So a big shout-out to the Brownsville Police Department Burglary Task Force. They were really on it. Thank you, chief.
I have two things. First, I want to give a shout-out to the Winter Haven Border Quilters. I had the distinct pleasure of going out to Winter Haven today and watch 104 women and one man sew over 300 baby quilts, which they do once a year, and they've been doing it for 19 years. And then after the end of the day, when 300-plus quilts are completed, I think last year was 380 quilts, they donate them to needy families in Brownsville, and certainly with today's weather, that would be very appreciated. So a shout-out to those ladies and gentlemen. They are doing a great effort and hope to join them to celebrate 20 years next year. The second thing that I have is that this weekend, we will be beginning the ninth season of The Challenge, reminding everyone The Challenge is an effort to invite folks to try on healthy eating and active living for the first 12 weeks of the month. It is a free program that is put together by the City of Brownsville Health Department and the School of Public Health, along with many other partners, and over 7,000 people have registered through the years, and we've lost as a community over 10,000 pounds. This is very important because of the epidemic numbers of diabetes in this community, one in three compared to the national average of one in 10, and that is fed by the fact that 80% of us are either overweight or obese. So trying that active living and healthy food choices is very important to our future, to our children's future, and to the vibrancy of the community. This year, sign-up will be Friday, January 19, from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Southmost Public Library and at the main branch on Central Boulevard. Thank you to the library staff for always working with us for that. And on Saturday at Linear Park from 9:00 to 12:00. There will be winners in several categories as usual, and today, we have identified a donor for an additional amount of money. So if you register and you complete 12 weeks and you lose 5% of your weight, you would then be put in a raffle for a drawing of $1,500 in addition to the regular prizes, one as a woman and one as a man. So even though if you don't win the big gold medal at the end, you still would have a chance to win the $1,500 cash prize. So again, these programs are free. They are supported. They have buddies ready to help you, and it's a lot of fun. So please come out and join. I encourage all the commissioners to join as well. It's free and easy to do, and it's good to show support for the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a great effort you've been doing for a long time. Proclamations?
Next, we have proclamations. Vedas Backyard Barbecue. Do we have anyone from there?
Mr. Vera.
Oh, there he is.
If I may, Mayor, you know, every, I try to go to Vedas at least once a week. I'm limited to once a week by my dietitian wife, but, you know, every Sunday, and I was visiting with Mr. Vera and Mrs. Vera, and I just want everybody to know, when you walk in, you see all these recognitions by Texas Monthly, you see recognitions from the National Magazine of Tacos throughout the United States, and I was telling the Vedas, it's amazing how they've been honored not just by Texas magazines, but by national magazines. And what was missing on their wall was a proclamation by the City of Brownsville. And I just want to remind everybody that we have great talent in this community, and we should be proud of ourselves, and we have a lot to offer the world. And every stone you turn, you find talent and more talent. And it's important for us to recognize that we have great citizens from Brownsville that are in the four corners of this planet, changing not just communities, states, but also nations. So with that, a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Vedas Backyard Barbecue. Whereas Vedas Backyard Barbecue was first established in 1955 and was founded by Alberto Vera Sr. and Carmen Vera. Vedas Backyard Barbecue is located at 2404 Southmost Road in Brownsville, Texas. Whereas Armando Vera Sr. and De La Vera are the owners and operators of Vedas Backyard Barbecue, proudly continue the time-honored method of cooking authentic Mexican barbacoa in an underground pit over hot mesquite embers. Whereas Vedas Backyard Barbecue is renowned for its dedicated menu, serving hot and fresh barbacoa, including cachete, lengua mixta, ojos y paladar, molleja, and jeta, as well as carnitas, birria, and smoked brisket accompanied by rich, flavorful salsas. Whereas Vedas Backyard Barbecue has drawn national acclaim and visitors from across the nation, as it remains the only establishment in the state of Texas to honor its traditional underground cooking method to create authentic Mexican barbacoa. And whereas Vedas Backyard Barbecue has demonstrated commitment to the rich culinary heritage of our region and garnered the attention of several publications, including Texas Monthly, Garden &amp; Guns Magazine, The Profits of Smoked Meat, A Journey Through Texas Barbecue by Daniel Vaughn, and The Tacos of Texas by Gerald Nies and Mando Rayo. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Vedas Backyard Barbecue, and further encourage all Brownsville residents to support family-owned businesses such as Vedas. With this, on behalf of the City Commission and the mayor, and all the citizens of Brownsville, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
You don't have to. You're good?
Thank you so much.
No. Thank you all for what you do for Brownsville. I've been to your place. I was there when a couple of these publications were there. So keep up the good work, and thank you for what you do. Second proclamation?
Next proclamation we have is Catholic Schools Week.
Is there anyone here for Catholic Schools Week?
Here's...
Yes, there are. Come on up.
See St. Mary's, St. Joe, Guadalupe, Dandy. Dandy, why don't you all come sit up here?
This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville designating January 28 to February 3 as National Catholic Schools Week. Whereas National Catholic Schools Week, an annual celebration of Catholic education in the United States, was first celebrated in 1974 by the National Catholic Education Association. Whereas National Catholic Schools Week 2018 observance begins Sunday, January 28, and runs all week through Saturday, February 3. The National Catholic Schools Week 2018 theme is Catholic Schools Learn, Serve, Lead, and Succeed. This theme encompasses the core values upheld in classrooms across the country through faith-based leadership, community stewardship, and a commitment to success. Whereas the Catholic Church oversees the largest network of private schools in the United States, over 1.8 million elementary, middle, and high school students were enrolled in Catholic schools during the 2016-2017 academic year. Whereas Brownsville, Texas is home to five Catholic schools, including Guadalupe Regional Middle School, Encarnate Word Academy, St. Joseph Academy, St. Luke's Catholic School, and St. Mary's Catholic School. These schools help ensure that students in Brownsville receive a broad education emphasizing the lifelong development of moral, intellectual, physical, and social values. And whereas Catholic schools produce students strongly dedicated to their faith, values, families, and communities by providing an intellectually stimulating environment that is also rich in spiritual character and moral development. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate January 28 to February 3, 2018, as National Catholic Schools Week, and further encourage the residents of Brownsville to celebrate the contributions Catholic schools have made to the quality of life in our community, done on the 16th of January 2018, the mayor and the City Commission.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming.
Keep up the good work, guys, all you guys. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to move the public comment period next.
That's fine.
I'll move...
Do you want to do the presentation?
All those in favor say aye.
Do you want to do the presentation?
Yeah, let's do the presentation, then we do it afterwards. Okay, they're good.
Next, we have the presentation, Children's Museum of Brownsville Annex Project.
Everybody be safe going home, okay?
Hello, everybody. My name is Felipe Peña. I'm the executive director at the Children's Museum of Brownsville. This is James Walker. He's going to pass out some packets that we brought for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So first and foremost, I want to thank you all so much for the time and attention to this project. I think it's extremely important that we sort of come to you first, and especially as we are in a city building and we are a city group or community group, that we present some of this information to you about where we are and where we want to go. The Children's Museum has been growing by leaps and bounds. In 2017, we experienced over 60,000 visitors through the doors, and we are looking to enhance some of our facilities and further our ability to provide exceptional services to the children and families of our community. In 2017, the Association of Children's Museums put out a report that describes the adequate size of a museum and at various stages of growth, and our museum, as we know already, is too small. Based on the attendance that we are experiencing, we should be between 15,000 and 25,000 square feet in space. And right now, the Children's Museum has 7,500 square feet of indoor space and 3,000 square feet on the outdoor space, a total of 10,000 square feet. Some of the major areas of needed improvement is our classroom, what we call the Celebration Room, which is where we hold a lot of our daily activities. Right now, we have 300 square feet of space where we can hold at most 20 people, and I don't know if that's necessarily a good thing. It gets kind of crowded all the time. We'd like to enhance that square footage to 800 square feet and be able to accommodate between 40 and 50 people at any given time. This new classroom that we look to add to the museum would allow us to not only do amazing new programming, but would also let us do in teacher service, small teacher in services, and also enhance the programming that currently exists and increase new programming like Makerspaces and STEAM field trips, which is all about science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And so some of the issues that we have had not only include floor space, but they also include storage. We do not have any storage at the museum right now whatsoever. We have an off-site location. We have a pod. We use our hallways. We use every nook and cranny we can find to put things in. We've actually had to convert the one and only storage that we had in the museum into an office because we ran out of space, so we'd like to change that. By doing this annex to increase our square footage, not only would we increase our classroom size to 800 square feet, but we'd also add to our museum floor space 300 additional square feet and help increase our exhibit area as well. It would add two new offices upstairs as well as storage space for all of our exhibit pieces and all the equipment that needs handling. The project is a $508,000 project. It will basically consume the back area of the museum right now that is just empty. There's nothing there, and would close the building completely all the way around. Through our logic model, we hope to, at the end of it, increase our number of visitors, increase our capacity for exhibits, events, programming, and over the summer, we conducted a survey to check with our patrons to see how they felt about their museum size, and 90% of them said, yes, we needed more space. So even the people that we're servicing now agree that we need to do this. We brought it here first because we want to make sure that you're aware of what the need is at the Children's Museum. We hope that you see it as valuable as we see it, as a resource for the community, not only in Brownsville, but the entire Rio Grande Valley. And we're really proud of what we've been able to accomplish so far. We hope to continue to do great things for the citizens of Brownsville and for everybody that visits us. And so that's where we want to go and take this museum to the next level. Now entertain any questions if you all have any.
I saw the article in the paper. Very, very well done, and a lot of good work going in there. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Drive home safely. Okay, now, can we do the public, the motion for public?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, for all of you who have signed up for public comment, the ones that have signed up that are on Agenda Item Number 17, those cannot be discussed at public comment. So Madam Secretary, do you have the names of those people?
Yes, I have two people that signed up for public comment. The first one is Monica Lozano. She didn't even show up today. The next one that I have is Ms. Yolanda Speis. How many of you all know what institutional discrimination is? Institutional discrimination happens when the discrimination is so interwoven into the different parts of our lives, subtly, covertly, and in ways where we do not even realize its presence until it bludgeons us. It's in our culture, classrooms, in our government. It encourages self-hatred, self-doubt, and acceptance through sanitized indoctrination. We know something is wrong, but we cannot quite put our finger on it or articulate it. When certain chosen people within the marginalized group claim they are not affected by it, those people rationalize that it must be you because you're the only one complaining. In essence, the institution shames you for seeing the problem where they don't, and indoctrinated follow suit. Maintaining the status quo without question, even though you have your doubts, is the type of indoctrination, and it perpetuates institutional discrimination. It tries not to only sanitize the oppression, it glamorizes it, and it rationalizes injustices by trying to make the ones who feel justified in discriminating against others as equals with those who in some instances are dying and have died fighting this institutional discrimination. When you have kids from marginalized groups singing the praises of a traitor who murdered millions over a capricious temper tantrum and can't see anything wrong with it, therein is the problem. When you bring it upon children and glorify it by default, it is indoctrination. When you mock those who see it for what it is and insult those who oppose that discrimination, well, that's institutional discrimination. And for those of us affected by it, it's a problem. If you can't see that clear as day, then the institutionalized discrimination has done its job. Why are we even discussing this? When you have people who don't live in our city and coming in to tell us how something should be done even though they don't live here or pay taxes, and it is designed to preserve a discriminatory message, it's a problem for the citizens of the COB. This is an albatross for the COB. It is bad publicity. Our city commissioners have gone against the conservative Texas grain for what was the right thing to do by protecting its LGBT employees in the workplace. This is no different. I remember when you guys did that. You went against the grain, and you did what you needed to do to protect LGBT employees in the City of Brownsville. Promoting and protecting diversity by removing oppression, racism, colorism, and institutionalized discrimination should be a no-brainer. It won't end racism and discrimination, but it is a really great start because our city leaders are setting the tone that we are a warm, forward-thinking, and welcoming city as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes care of item number nine.
Yes. Going back to consent agenda items, item number five, A through M.
Motion to approve a consent item?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six.
Next, we have the public hearings, Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 2018-898-DD to Re-Adopt Chapter 74, Parks and Recreation, Section 74-18, Local Standards of Care for Additional Year as Per Ordinance Guidelines.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. We are re-adopting this ordinance in order to be compliant with the Texas Human Resource Code, Section 42.041B14, Required License and Accreditation. This has us set our own standards for childcare, which is based on best practices, and we just need this to be in compliance with our youth program.
Okay, and this is public hearing of anybody here on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to mention that we skipped over another presentation, the City's General Fund Sales Tax Collections. I don't know if you want to do that one before we continue with public hearing?
I apologize. I just now looked at it and saw that I had not done that. Is that for Pete?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission. Since the City of Brownsville, one of the highest revenue sources that this general fund has is sales tax. Property tax is the other revenue source that is also high. There's also the fees of services. So about 75% of our revenues will come from property taxes, sales tax, and other fees and services. This presentation is just to show you what is the, how are we doing the first quarter of the fiscal year. For the first quarter of the fiscal year, for the end of December, we had a slight increase of .84%, or 56,000-plus additional revenues that we had in comparison to last year. We're still below the budget number by 2.06%, or a little over $140,000. This particular schedule shows you the same percentages that I covered earlier. We're at .84% above last year, but we're below 2.06% budget-wise. If we continue on the same trend for the next nine months with a decrease, we would have a decrease at the end of the fiscal year by approximately $463,000. We don't see this happening because the last few months, we saw an increase compared to last year, even an increase not only on the actual side, but also on the budget side. $80,961, we had an increase for December, and we also had an increase for the budget. So I see that between now and September, we should see a positive trend as we move forward. This just shows you the general fund sales tax comparison between fiscal year 2017 This just shows you the general fund sales tax comparison between fiscal year 2017, 2018, as well as, as the budget for 2018. This just gives you a comparison of some of the, what are other cities, how are the other cities compared to Brown, compared to Brownsville? We see, we, we see obviously McAllen has, has the highest sales tax revenues in the valley. We are second, then we have Harlingen as third. As we move forward, these are the increases from the valleys that were surveyed. We're at .86% above last year. Harlingen is 10.47 above. McAllen is 1.59. Edinburgh 2.73. The Island 1.92. Mercedes, which we believe catered to the Mexican nationals, is a 9.27% decrease. San Mateo shows an increase. Westlaco shows an increase. Westlaco, on the other hand, also showed a, a decrease of 4.4. FAR is at 6% above. We compare the calendar years between 2016 and 2017, you, you, you see that there is a drop between fiscal year 2016 and 2017 for Brownsville for about 1.5. McAllen had a 2.5 decrease. Harlingen 6.42% and so forth and so forth. Again, the, 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 the city that, that really went down was Mercedes at 11 and a half percent. What are the, what are the reasons why, why our sales tax, it was in decline last year and it started in a decline this year? We probably have to say this because of the peso. Way back in 2013, the peso was at 13 to the dollar. At, at December, it was at 19.7 to the dollar. So there's a, a decrease in the, the value between the peso and the, and the dollar of 33.57%, which means that the Mexican national, the purchasing power for the net Mexican national has decreased and by, by 33%, 34%. One of the areas that we also see is La Plaza Mall, according to the Simon Property Group webpage, is one of the largest grossing retail malls in the nation for, for food-wise. This is just the, the peso that I just covered earlier. We feel that there was a, one of the things that we, we also see is leakage. Since Brownsville population is the highest in the valley, yet we don't generate the sales tax that cities comparable to our population would generate. And, and the other one, of course, is internet online sales that may have an impact on our sales tax. And this is what we, we're talking about, people spending money not only here but also outside the valley, outside Brownsville. We have a, again, the population of Brownsville is 183,000 based on the census of 2016, followed by McAllen, 142,000. And then you have the other, the other cities, the Edinbergs, the Missions, the Fars, have really gained numbers over, over Harlingen. Harlingen used to be the, the number three largest city in the valley. They're, they're no longer as sparse population. Edinburgh has, has jumped in front of Harlingen. Mission has also increased, is over Harlingen as well as FAR. On a per capita basis, Brownsville is $198, McAllen is 412. So you can see where the leakage comes from. They're, they, they have a lower population, yet they're generating more sales tax than we are. As far as the sales tax on the internet, if a company has a, if you, if you're going to buy on the internet from a company that, let's say it's in Maine, and that, that company in Maine doesn't have any presence in Texas, such as the warehouse, store, or office, or a sales representative in Texas, there is no sales tax that's collected. So, and again, out of state sellers are not required to collect sales if business in Texas does not have a physical presence. This is the sales tax revenues for various, various years and from, for, for Brownsville. And as far as fiscal year, we, there was a drop of 1.63%. And that's my presentation.
Very good, Pete. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item number seven.
Item number seven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-79 to rezone from medium retail G to general retail G for lot number three, Las Palmas condominiums located near Price Road.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. This is a 1.5 acre property, and they're requesting to rezone from medium retail G to general retail G. The applicant is also requesting a specific use permit for the same property to allow three apartments and a retail plaza. As you can see in this map, there are apartments to the north, south, and there's also along Price Road and centered along, along the intersection of Old Port Isabel and Price Road, second commercial, third commercial, fourth commercial, and fifth commercial. This parcel is part of the core central district, which is predominantly residential with a mix of other uses. Commercial uses should be neighborhood and service-oriented, and residential uses should be primarily single-family dwelling with an average density of three dwellings per As you can see, this is the intersection, it's a little covered. Here is the intersection of Old Port Isabel and Price Road. To the north are apartments. To the east are apartments and commercial buildings, including a gas station and a bank. To the south are apartments and commercial buildings, including a pawn shop and a car lot. And to the west are more apartments and commercial businesses and civic institutions, including St. Luke's, right here, and Homer Hanna Early College High School. This map shows the 200-foot radius for public notices as per city ordinance, Section 348-34. All properties that lie within a 200-foot radius are mailed public notice for public hearings, including the Planning and Zoning Commission and here. So there was 10 mail-outs and zero written opposition for this case, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from medium retail G to general retail G.
Anyone here on this issue? It's public hearing. If not, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All four of us.
Next, we have public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-079-S to allow apartments and apartment use in general retail G for lot three, Las Palmas condominiums located near Price Road.
So this is the same property at the, near the intersection of Press and Old Port Isabel? Okay. And here is the site plan. Okay, here is Price Road. Here's Las Palmas Circle. They're proposing three apartments total, and here is the plaza. This includes sidewalks along both streets, as well as over here is a 14 bike parking rack, and right here is green space. And of course, the vegetation you see includes trees and shrubs. Here is again the 200-foot radius map. There were 10 mail-outs, zero written opposition to this case. PNZ does support the specific use permit to allow apartment/business plaza at general retail G, with the condition that the property must comply with all codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
Very good. Again, this is public hearing. Is anyone here on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10.
Next, we have items for individual consideration, action item number 10, consideration and action to appoint an interim city manager.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Michael Lopez as the interim city manager.
I second, I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11.
Action item number 11, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint two members to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. This is a request for your recommendation to appoint or reappoint two members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. These are the current board members and, as well as the applicants.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move for Mr. Abraham Galonsky.
You're gonna move to nominate him?
To nominate him.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there, Miles?
I would move to appoint Miles Garza.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, those are your two members, Miles Garza and Abraham Galonsky.
Thank you.
Item number 12.
Action item number 12, consideration and action to adopt budget amendment resolution number 2018-005 to amend the fiscal year 2018 budgets for the general fund, capital projects fund, and employee benefit fund.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, these are budget amendments that we're proposing. Before we, we introduce the budget amendments, I'd like to just indicate to you, give you a report on, on when we started the fiscal year's budget. Top part is the unassigned fund balance of $21,292,087 on this particular schedule. When we adopted the budget for fiscal year 2018, in order for us to, to balance the budget for 2018, we were using a fund balance of 1.3 million. So we started the year by using fund balance of 1.3 in order to balance the budget for 2018. That was the start. These are the proposed budget amendments that, that we are proposing for you to adopt based on the resolution. We have the city manager payout of $355,630 for the animal shelter, $23,434. We have a temporary workforce for the Zika virus of $83,377. We have downtown security cameras of $200,000. Beautification, $175,650. We're transferring $375,000 for debt service. Capital projects, $241,250. And we're also transferring $250,000 for the employee benefit fund. As far as the capital project funds that we're asking the city to transfer from the general fund, this is to take care of some of the local share that, that we are incurring for the construction of some signals, seventh signal, traffic signals, and sidewalk improvements. There's a grant from Tax dot of $1,142,000 that requires a, a local share of $241,250. After the budget amendments get approved tonight, we started off the year, like I said earlier, the first budget amendment that has taken place this year was in December, December 3, 17, when we appropriated $150,000 for the headhunter services. And then we're, for this, this particular date, January 16th, we're asking you to, to approve those budget amendments, which equal to $1,704,341. We, we deduct that amount, then we're gonna have an estimated unassigned fund balance of $18,137,746. Again, these are all estimated numbers for the end of fiscal year 2018. The, this would bring us our reserve to around 17% of expenditures. So with these budget amendments that, that we are adopting tonight, we are using fund balances by about $3,154,341 to date. The city of Brownsville, way back and earlier several years ago, we adopted a, a fund balance policy, and that's according to Statement 54 of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or what we call GASB 54. The GASB is, is the independent organization that establishes and improves standards of accounting and financial reporting, not only for local governments, for the, but for also for the government, federal government, and state. This policy ensures that the city shall maintain adequate fund balances in order to, one, to provide sufficient cash flow for daily financial needs, to secure and maintain investment-grade bond ratings, to offset significant economic downturns or revenue shortfalls, and to provide funds for unforeseen expenditures related to emergencies. And that's the reason why we, we adopted the fund balance policy way back in, in 2011, and that's based on recommendations from Statement 54, or it's, it's a policy that was established by GASB 54, considering up fund balance policies. The, way back in, in, in the early 90s, for instance, the city of Brownsville grade, grade was a triple B plus or a B double A one for Moody's. At that time in 91, if I recall correctly, our, our fund balance was about $200,000. The rating agencies, when we spoke to them, they told us, we're gonna put Brownsville in a credit watch because your fund balances are so low. As a matter of fact, way back in September of 91, I recall correctly, at then, of course, we walk, we worked with estimates at the time, we, we felt that we were gonna be running out of cash. We had actually in September, we made a plan to visit one of our local banks to get a temporary loan for the operation, just to pay, pay the, pay the, pay the employees. We, we came out with a $250,000 fund balance, so that, that was, that was, that was, that was okay. But at that time, we were a B, B triple A plus rating, which is, which is, which is low. Since then, since 19, 1991, we've gone to a double A now. So our, what, the reason why, the good thing about having a good rating is that when we issue bonds, we issue at a lower interest rate. And in the past, when we were at very low rating, we had to buy bond insurance, and bond insurance costs money. We don't have that cost like we used to have way back then. As a matter of fact, our rating is almost exactly as the insurance companies. So when we have underwriters come to the city to buy our bonds, that's one of the attractive things that they see, is that we do have a strong fund balance. They know that the city of Brownsville will pay some of the bondholders that are be paying, that will be paying for this, for, for the bonds that they purchase. A few years ago, we had a visit from an underwriter, and they, they told us, we like what Brownsville is doing. We know that when we buy your bonds, we're gonna have an easy sell. We're gonna be able to sell to some of our bondholders because they are, they feel safe that Brownsville is gonna pay. There was an article just recently, I think it was yesterday or day before yesterday, about Starr County, where they have a, a loan that's come due, that their, their fund balance is in a deficit, that they're gonna have to go back and, and, and talk to the loan star bank. I think that's where they got the money from, to negotiate to stay their loans. So we certainly don't wanna use, face those years that we did at one time, because now our, our bond rating has, has actually increased quite a bit. We have a double A three right now with Moody's, a double A with Centering Poors, and a double A minus with, with Fitch. One of the things that has helped us, we, we look at sales tax, and sales tax has not been as great as in the past. We've, we've saw, we've seen some dives. What has helped us in the past few years has the PUB transfer. Speaking to Chief Financial Officer this morning, they, they give us an amount at the beginning of the year with the under, this is the, this is the number that we use. For some rea, for the reason, for the last three years, the, the PUB has actually increased that budget amount that we had, and that has kept us where we are right now. So I'd like to, I guess, thank the PUB for what they've done for us, that their, the cash transfer has been high. And as, as you can see here on this particular shard, that the cash transfers from the PUB continue to rise and, but it's not a given thing, of course. Things can change. The, the good thing is that they have offsite, off sales outside that they've been able to sell to the outside, I guess, users, and they have accumulated more, more, more sale. But it, just an example, let's say that they have a $10 million sales on the outside. We get a million dollars more because it's 10%. That's how, that's how the formula works. Also, utility, our utility usage has also decreased. If our utility decrease, that means that our cash transfer also increased. If our utility decrease, that means that our cash transfer also increases. We always look at the fund balance. In case of a hurricane, for instance, I know that we had a hurricane way back in Dali in 2008. We had, had to pay for more of the fund balance of $100,000. They, the, and, and looking at the, at this particular Hurricane Dali, it took us nine years to get our less payment from FEMA. We got our payment in 2017 of $249,728. It took us nine years to get the final payment. So it, it's a, it's a slow, a slow process sometimes when, when we deal with hurricanes. And obviously, we didn't have Harvey. Had we had Harvey, like, you know, track, you know, like Houston, well, the Gulf Coast and Houston area, they were devastated. We, obviously, we wanna have a fund balance to take care of some of these unexpected expenses. The policy that we have right now states that the city will maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance in its general, general fund ranging from 15% to 18%. But it also says that if it exceeds the 18% range, the city will consider such balance, balance surpluses, which we have been doing tonight, for one-time expenditures. We don't want reoccurring expenses. These are all non-reoccurring expenses, and that's what we, that's what we've done. We're, we're below the seven, 18%, I think it came up to right now 17, very close to 17%. So we're in that range. So we feel very comfortable with, with what we're doing right now. And any questions? Oh, that's it, because this is another item.
Well, I wanna thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, because when it comes to the fund balance, it's very important. And there's been instances, even with other local public entities, where they've had hurricanes. There was one entity that was a water district, and I remember that their big feud was, why do they have such a large fund balance? And, and what happened after one of the hurricanes, they had to use up most of their reserves to actually get back to par. So I think it's very important, and I wanna thank you for actually keeping the monies there, because if we ever have an emergency, we wanna have some, some emergency cash.
You've done an incredible job, Pete. I was there when, when we were in those times, and I remember how everybody was freaking out about it. So you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay, guys, this is, item number 12 is an action item. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Pete. I think we have item number 13.
Next, we have action item number 13. Consideration and action to approve the Young House lease agreement between the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, this lease agreement with BCIC is exactly the, the one we have with JIBIC. So we recommend that you adopt this lease agreement between the city of Brownsville and BCIC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, uh, 14.
Action item number 14. Consideration and action to adopt Resolution Number 2018-007, re-accepting, reviewing, amending, and re-adopting of the provisions listed in the documents titled City of Brownsville, Texas: Amended Investment Policy and City of Brownsville, Texas: Amended Investment Strategy Statement.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. Under Texas Government Code, Public Funds, Public Funds Investment Act, the government body of an investment entity shall review its investment policy and investment strategy not less than annually. The governing body shall adopt or render by rule ordinance resolution stating that has reviewed the investment policy and investment strategies, and that the instruments so adopted shall be recorded, any changes made to either the investment policy or strategy. The city first adopted investment policy in September 24, 1996. Our policy states that we must revisit this policy annually and make amendments where they are needed. The investment, investment committee has reviewed the investment and investments and strategy policy. We have updated the names of the funds that we're investing in the cities and the component units idle funds, which includes entire operating funds, construction and capital funds, and the debt service funds. The city investment policy is a very conservative policy. The city does not invest its idle cash in risk investments. Our investment policy's primary objective is for preservation of capital, safety of city funds, maintenance of sufficient liquidity, maximizing a return within acceptable risk constraints, and diversification of investments. Tonight, city staff is recommending the city commission approve Resolution 2018-007 as required by the city policy.
Okay, this is a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Libra.
Next, we have action item number 15. Consideration and action to accept agreement by and between the city of Brownsville and Dr. John Wells as the health authority for the city of Brownsville Public Health Department.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening. This action item is basically renewing an agreement with Dr. John Wells, who has led us through the H1N1, the Zika virus, and it's an action item. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Art.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item number 16.
Next, we have action item number 16. Consideration and action to authorize a donation of equipment to the city of H. Matamoros, Tamalipas, Mexico.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. We request authorization to donate some equipment to Matamoros, Mexico, which they've really shown a need for that equipment that we no longer use, or we've upgraded in our fleet. One of them is a 1997 Pierce fire truck that we no longer use. Another one is a 2003 American Le France ambulance. And then we do have some other firefighting equipment as far as bunker gear and air packs and stuff that we've upgraded over time, that we have seen there, that they have expressed a need for that equipment, so request approval to donate that equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. It's a good work. Item number 17.
Action item number 17. Presentation and discussion in regards to the Jefferson Davis Highway Memorial Town Hall findings from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Committee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm Dylan Vanderford, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Committee Chairman. Come before you this evening to give you the results concerning the town hall meeting of 11/29/2017 concerning the Jefferson Davis Monument located at Washington Park. We got to this point this evening because the memorial was erected in 1926 by the United Daughters of the Confederacy, and of course, the city commission is well-versed in the fact that it was defaced September 2017. The event held at the Brownsville Event Center with the purpose of hearing from the public on whether the Jefferson Davis Monument at Washington Park should be relocated was a very well-attended event. We had approximately 117 attendees signed in that evening. Forty-three of those attendees spoke. Thirty-one of those speaking were from the city of Brownsville. Presented here are the breakdowns, or breakdown, I'm sorry, from the town hall meeting. This concerns every single person that spoke on behalf of the Jefferson Davis Monument and the public comment that we took, I'm sorry, and the public comment cards that were turned in that evening. We had 16 persons who wanted to relocate the monument to Veterans Park, and they gave various reasons why that should happen. We had 11 people comment that they wanted the monument moved to a museum. We had eight that wanted to keep it as-is, where-is, six that wanted to have it removed completely from public view, two other, and one to keep with additional education presented on another part of the monument. For the residents of the city of Brownsville, we had 10 that wanted to relocate the monument to a museum, eight who wanted to relocate it to Veterans Park, six to keep it as-is, four for complete removal from public view, two other, and one to add additional signage. We continued to take public comment through email and telephone call at the Parks and Recreation Department. Sixty total comments, six for other, 16 to relocate to a museum, 19 for complete remu, pardon me, removal from public view, nine to relocate to Veterans Park, and one to add additional educational information, nine to keep as-is. Another way we can look at this is really just pro versus con, a yes or no concerning the monument, 19 pro monument, 36 con, and nine other. Relocation to any other place, we had 25 to relocate to any other place, 19 to have nowhere, as in removed from public view, and 10 to keep in the current location. Breakdown of the comment themes from all cities, all persons that commented, all persons that sent in information, nine for other, 26 to relocate to a museum, 32 for complete removal, 17 to relocate to Veterans Park, one to add additional educational information, and 11 to keep as-is. Are there any questions I can answer concerning the numbers I've given you this evening?
Does anyone have any questions? Looks like something that has to be digested for just a little bit, as far as I'm concerned, but the agenda says presentation and discussion, so there is no action item to be taken today. If anybody, do you have any questions?
No, but I'd just like to say that's a good, great job y'all did there.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate it. You don't, you don't realize that, you know, we, we spend a lot of time on this commission doing a lot of things. And so all the things you guys do for us, we appreciate very, very much.
The advisory board is happy to serve whenever we're called upon. I want to add one little caveat. On both sides of this issue were some very impassioned people, and it's very difficult to separate ourselves from our emotions concerning this, so...
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I tell you what, I respect everybody's passion, because what happens is I happen to be kinda one of those kinda guys that has definite views about different things, but they're all to be respected, they're all to be honored. We will, I think, have a little bit of time to digest these results and act accordingly. But we do thank everybody for participating. It's better, I'd rather have an impassioned plea and say someone is participating, it's better to have your hat in the arena than not have it at all. So thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you.
If, if the...
Item number eight. I'm sorry?
If the committee can be of any more service, please don't hesitate to contact us.
Well, we will, we will notify the committee, first of all, prior to anything, so that in case we have any other additional questions, all right? So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dylan.
Item number 18.
Next, we have action item number 18. Consideration and action for Resolution Number 2018-006 of the city of Brownsville authorizing and approving the dissolution of the Brownsville Border Film Commission and transferring all rights and responsibilities to the Main Street Brownsville.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. We are requesting the dissolution of the Brownsville Border Film Commission, which has been inactive for over 10 years, and request that all duties and responsibilities be transferred to Main Street Brownsville, since both programs are intended to spur economic development.
Sounds good.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. It carries. It's passed. Item number 19.
Next, we have action item number 19. Consideration and action on Resolution Number 2018-008 Confirming Contracting Authority and Real Estate Convoyancy and Transactions.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, this is similar to a resolution the commission passed about 10 years ago. All it does is formalize the contracting authority in the city manager, or in this case, the deputy or the assistant city manager, as decide, in that order of preference, to execute documents related to conveyances, leases, and the like. It's something the title companies require, and so, and so there it is.
Entertained a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And before we have a motion to adjourn, all of you, thank you for being here on such a cold night. We appreciate your participation in our city affairs, and we want you to make sure you drive safely and stay warm. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.